Pardon me, I've called the June 27 meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we'll have an invocation tonight by Pastor Roland Thompson of Mount Sinai Family Life Center. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to rise with me and then after the invocation, if everybody would stand. And Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the pledge allegiance. Sir.
Most holy and all wise God, our heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for allowing us all to be here. Lord, we thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. For without you, Lord, nothing is possible. But through you, Lord, you have made all things possible for us. Lord, we pray that you would bless us with your presence here this evening and speak to the hearts of your people and your leaders. Give them knowledge tempered with wisdom, wisdom with understanding. That understanding flow through this meeting as a mighty stream of courtesy, compassion, and compromise. Be glorified today by what your people do in this place this evening. And we ask it all in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. If the members of council will indicate your presence by voting yes electronically, we'll take a roll call. And Madam Clerk, we have 100 percent attendance.
Yes, sir.
The next item is approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of June 12, 2017, a call meeting of June 13, 2017, minutes of a regular meeting, June 13, 2017, and minutes of a call meeting, June 19, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote electronically. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to special presentation. And the city council received a special presentation from Support Portsmouth Public Arts last evening at the work session on a proposed sculpture, public art, for downtown. And council decided to have that same presentation replicated tonight. And we will have a public hearing on this matter on July 11, which is our regular council meeting, in this room to receive public comments. And with that, I'll ask Barbara Vincent to come to the lectern to give and your colleagues.
We are very grateful for this opportunity to share our exciting news with you. I am Barbara Vincent. I am a resident of Portsmouth. And I'm speaking on behalf of Support Portsmouth Public Art, a nonprofit organization of volunteers who are committed to commissioning, purchasing, and installing public art in the city of Portsmouth. For seven years, we've been placing art in outdoor spaces in Portsmouth. The Toad at the entrance of the Children's Museum is one of the favorites. Seven murals throughout the city, the Love Sculpture on the waterfront, and most recently, the First Amendment Sculpture on the stairs of the main library. All of these have been placed on public land, and all of these have been created by Portsmouth artists and funded by grants and private donations. We have always asked the citizens for their ideas for our new projects. For instance, the Love Sculpture and First Amendment Tribute were ideas that were brought to our Board of Directors from residents. We are very happy to be able to show you a new project tonight, and it was brought to our board by Portsmouth designer Rebecca Laris. Rebecca is a graduate of Auburn University School of Architecture with a degree in interior design. As an industrial designer, her many projects include local, regional, and nationwide have also brought her much distinction. She served on many boards and commissions for the city, and she and her clients were the first to take advantage of the facade improvement program downtown. Rebecca?
Thank you, Barbara. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Dr. Patton, council members, and ladies and gentlemen. As Barbara just said, my name is Rebecca Laris. I'm a resident of Portsmouth. And you can only imagine how excited I am to be able to show you today what's depicted in the model in front of you and on the photographs on the screen. This is a sculpture that I designed to be located in the center of the traffic circle at Portsmouth Pavilion, Harbor Vista Apartments, and our own City Hall. The ideas guiding my design are simple and forthright. I don't have to tell any of you that Portsmouth has a maritime heritage like no other city. And the idea of using stylized sailing ships in a sculpture that reflects our history seemed like a good place to start. Another key element of the design is that I based it on our own city logo, and I'll show you that now, as if you don't remember. This is our own city logo. And I actually took four of our city logos and intertwined them, interlocked them, and created the 3D sculpture. The connection in the design not only provides strength for the construction, but it provides visual strength as well. And often, the finest result of simplicity is elegance. And I honestly want to bring that elegance and grace to our city landscape with this sculpture. Underlying the design is how the sculpture fits the site and serves to unite the unique structures around it. It shares similar structural supports with Portsmouth Pavilion. It's literally Harbor Vista Apartments' name, and our City Hall will be represented by our logo. One of my last design concepts, but certainly just as important as acknowledging the heritage of our city, is the visual representation of a fresh and soaring vision of Portsmouth under full sail headed in new directions. I'll tell you a little bit about the construction. After careful consideration, the sculpture is to be built from white powder-coated aluminum. Numerous discussions with engineers have us leaning toward perforated aluminum. The sculpture is about 22 feet tall. It's about 20 feet wide, and it will be fabricated locally. The sails of the sculpture are designed in sections, just like actual sails, allowing for ease of installation and repairs in the field. The outer perimeter of the sails are anchored by the use of stainless steel turnbuckles and exposed concrete footers, similar to those at Portsmouth Pavilion, but certainly not the same scale. Centrally, the scales are anchored into a concrete pad with footers, as is that center galvanized metal mast, so to speak. And while I'm on the subject of the mast, the sculpture has been purposely designed with space around the mast so that visual contact can be made by drivers on any side of the circle approaching in any direction. For instance, if someone's pulling out of the parking garage, you'll be able to see that traffic on approach to the circle. Aesthetically compatible bollards will also be located around the perimeter. At night, the sculpture will be really exciting because we're using architectural-grade LED projectors. These lights will be strategically located, and they'll change with variations of rich white light. On one of the photographs, you can see that there's an inner perimeter brick sidewalk, and it's engraved with granite markers. And they'll be just like those that we're using in our Granite Square marker project now, only ours will be marked to provide recognition of the funding of the sculpture. Also, you can see from the photo that an unusual and interesting way to view it is going to be possible from City Hall and from Harbor Vista Apartments, looking down from the top, that is. I am honestly so honored to be part of this project for SPPA and Portsmouth that I'm waiving any design fee or project management fee in hopes that I can help the sculpture smoothly navigate its way into Portsmouth soon. And I have a few more tidbits from Barbara that's very exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. This endeavor is obviously the largest one for us yet, and it has a significant budget, approximately $100,000. The good news is, we did not come to ask you for money. We are very proud to announce that Support Portsmouth Public Art will be working with a partner on this project. We had no idea what to expect when we approached our new partner, but quickly found out that they share our enthusiasm for Portsmouth, having already improved the landscape with the beautiful Harbor Vista Apartments located right across the street. The builder, the Breeden Company of Virginia Beach, has made the commitment to continue their allegiance to Portsmouth by giving us $100,000 to completely fund our project, and we want to thank them from the bottom of our hearts. Their dedication to Portsmouth is welcomed with open arms, and we look forward to their future investments in the city. We hope that you will look favorably upon our project and allow the sculpture to be placed in the circle for residents and visitors alike to enjoy as Portsmouth sails into a bright and prosperous future. We thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And again, I announce that the city council will hold a public hearing on this matter on July 11 at 7:00 in the council chamber. It will be part of our next council meeting to receive comments from the public. And after the public hearing, council will consider adopting a motion to approve the public art. With that, we go to unfinished business. Item 17242, it's a use permit. And Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution's caption, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting the use permit UP 1701 to Wendy's Properties LLC to construct a restaurant with a drive-through window at property consisting of 833 through 835 London Boulevard, 433 through 445 Chestnut Street, and 818 through 828 Queen Street, and in conjunction therewith, authorizing modifications to certain standards of the Uptown D-2 Form Based Code District in accordance with Section 203D of Appendix B to Chapter 40.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In order for us to get this before us, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion that's been duly seconded. This matter is on its second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the matter. All in favor, please vote yes. Oppose, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to city manager's report, and that is, item 17269 is our next item, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance pertaining to grant funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for a marketing campaign to publicize an exhibition at the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center titled "To Face the Unknown: Portsmouth and the Great War."
In order to get this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to agenda item 17270, which is the consideration of the adoption of ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an alcohol education and prevention grant in the amount of $6,473.25 from the Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control Board and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund an alcohol education program.
Thank you. In order for us to get this before us, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Then we'll vote on the question. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Item 17271, which is a consideration of the adoption of ordinance to amend Chapter 32. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Article 2 Right-of-Way Permit and Article 4 Street Poles thereof and by adopting a new Article 11 pertaining to co-location of small cell facilities on existing structures.
Thank you. In order to put this before us, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion before us to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 32 of our code, the city code. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to item 17272, which is the consideration of a resolution pertaining to certain city-owned property. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the conveyance of 3215 Academy Avenue to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, and the execution of a deed, cooperation agreement, and other documents in connection therewith.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. And council, we're ready for discussion. And Councilwoman Simmons has asked for the floor. And ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important for the public to know that the purpose of the conveyance of the property, which is the former Churchland Library Building, to the Economic Development Authority is because they have a pending sale for the building. There is a commercial entity interested in buying the structure, which will put it back on the tax rolls. So I think this is all for good.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, 17-273 reports, or boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor Cherry, you have a report.
Yes, yes, Mayor. I have two nominations tonight. I'd like to move for appointment of G. Quince to the Historic Preservation Commission and of Sherri Thraxton to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded that pertains to two appointments. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to item 17274, items submitted by council members. Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items of interest tonight. The first one is, you know, we always ask for your tax money, and now we're going to ask for your blood. The Mayor's Blood Drive, an annual event to give blood to the American Red Cross. We are down to only 44 percent of where we want to be, and the last day to participate is tomorrow, Wednesday, June 28, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here in City Hall. If you are able to give blood, we encourage you to do so. Also, to make public aware, the city offices will be closed on Monday and Tuesday, July 3rd and 4th, because they are state holidays, so they are also city holidays. But we are always working. We are working on truck fogging and aerial spraying for mosquitoes. There will be truck fogging through June 29 and aerial spraying tomorrow, the 28, weather permitting. And on the 4th of July, we're going back to an old tradition of having music on the waterfront, which we haven't done in a few years, at the former Holiday Inn Hotel site on the downtown waterfront adjacent to the Tidewater Yacht Marina. The Tidewater Concert Band is going to play a patriotic concert beginning at 8:00 p.m. So they'll play patriotic music from 8 until about 9:30, at which time the fireworks will begin at 9:30. And during that period, they'll be playing the 1812 Overture to the fireworks. So bring a lawn chair and come down and enjoy the Tidewater Concert Band beginning at 8 on the 4th of July. On the Thursday nights, this coming Thursday, we have, of course, the Sunset Thursdays at Portside, which are so popular. This Thursday night, June 29, raw jazz is playing. And next week, July 6, the Tidewater Winds will be playing. So that'll be a different kind of music down there, and I'm sure be well received. On Saturday, July 8, for all the shagging dancer beach music crowd, there will be shagging on High Street from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's an ode to Bill Deal and Bill Deal and the Rondells. I'm sure most of you know Bill Deal was a Portsmouth native and very famous in his day. And so there will be music from, beginning at 3:00, near Middle and High, near Dinwiddie and High, back and forth, the original Rondell, Soul and Tent, and a lot of beach music bands up and down the street. So we encourage you to enjoy all those activities of interest.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The morning of July 4, from 8:30 to 10:30, Historic Craddock will be hosting their 99th Children's Bike Parade and Patriotic Salute. If you really want to get a feeling of what July 4 is all about, certainly invite you to attend that function. There's speeches, there's music, and seeing the children, how they dress up their bicycles is quite a sight. So once again, that's July 4, 8:30 to 10:30. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. In our previous discussion about SIPSA, I forgot to ask consensus of council, could we also have in that meeting an educational portion where our citizens are updated as far as who actually handles? And I'll break it down simply as the black trash can, the blue trash can, and then the trash that's on the curb, so that our citizens are educated on that before we get into our discussion on the SIPSA issue.
Very good. Any... Good. Dr. Patton, would you... Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. This brings us to agenda item 17276, non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker is... Well, before we have that, Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol on speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe the basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, first speaker is Barry Randall, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dr. Patton, Barry Randall, the apprentice park section of Portsmouth. I just wanted to invite the public out on this Saturday, July 1, at 8:00 a.m., where we are having a walk for our youth here in the city of Portsmouth with all the announcements that we all heard from Councilwoman Simmons, all the positive things that have happened in Portsmouth. We're trying to build upon that, and I want to thank the members of council that are partnering with us and joining us on this Saturday. We have Michael White from the Green Bay Packers Summer Camp coming down to speak with our youth. We have other community leaders speaking to our youth, and we just want to get behind our youth and let them know that they matter, especially our young adults. You all know we've had some hiccups with some shootings in the last couple of weeks, and I believe last night we had a murder. So we don't want to pay too much attention to that. We do want to continue building upon the change in the climate of atmosphere here in the city of Portsmouth. And I believe it's going to be from 8:00 to 12:00. We're going to walk one mile from here at City Hall to New Mount Olivet Baptist Church, which is on County Street. I want to also thank Chief Chapman in the Police Department, who has been very supportive of this idea from day one, when I met with her about it about a month or so ago. So we have children coming from far and near that's going to walk with us. So just asking all the citizens of Portsmouth, those who love Portsmouth for whatever the reason, to come, put your tennis shoes on, and walk a mile with us. And we're going to end up at New Mount Olivet, where we're going to have hamburgers, hot dogs, popcorn, snow cone, face painting, bounce houses, live performances. And unfortunately, it's going to be first thing in the morning, so you don't have to eat breakfast, because the cookout will start at 9:00 a.m., because we're trying to beat the sun, as well as be respectful of the fact that it is a holiday weekend, and many of our citizens will be traveling out of town. So I want to invite those of you all from city council that may not be aware of this, and also the citizens at home, that, you know, a lot of people, we can sit and talk and bash one another all day, but at the end of the day, the children are watching, and we need to make sure that we're supporting them. And people are paying attention to those of us that are actually working, other than those of us that are just talking. So I want to invite you all out. We'll be here this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. here on the back landing of City Hall, where we will have a moment of silence to where people can pray to God or whatever they deem is appropriate on their personal beliefs for our youth. And then we will immediately be escorted by our Portsmouth Police Department as we walk down Crawford Street, making a left turn on High Street, making a left turn on Court Street, making a right turn on County Street until we get to our destination. And many of you all may say, well, while we're taking that route, because if we just leave here from City Hall straight down County Street, we would have cheated, and it would not be a mile. So we want to let our youth know that we are going to walk a mile in their shoes, and we are going to join together, black, white, brown, yellow, regardless of our ethnicities, our cultural background, upbringing, religious beliefs, preferences. We want to come together and let the children know that we love them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker is Jim Doniker. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council, Dr. Patton. I just wanted to... I've been lived in Portsmouth for about two years now, and I just came to just ask for if council has any further comment on the recent Virginia Pilot article that described how the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame is still struggling to figure out how they're going to move their artifacts from that location. I know it's been quite some time since that board has voted to remove those artifacts and to move them to Virginia Beach, but with it being such a cultural landmark for the downtown area, if council has any comment on that process, as well as if there are any ideas or things moving forward on what we can do to fill that large space downtown.
Thank you, sir. We're here to hear from you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Your asking for the floor? Yes, sir.
To...
Yes, sir.
To, to just comment on the gentleman's question. As far as moving the artifacts, logistically, that, that'll be up to the Hall of Fame folks to do that. I did, as the liaison, council liaison to the Sports Hall of Fame, I did speak with Mr. Webb last week, and he communicated to me what, pretty much what you read in the Virginian Pilot, that they're going to vacate the building. The city doesn't own the building. It is a privately owned building, and it's on the market for $3.95 million. And hopefully, you know, a taxpaying entity will go there, create tax dollars as well as jobs. But I understand that those artifacts, most of them will be going to various buildings at Town Center in Virginia Beach. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joanne Thambeswamy. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Patton, and Vice Mayor, and all the members of council. My name is Joanne Thambeswamy, and I am a new EVMS Portsmouth Family Medicine resident. One of the things that has concerned me particularly in the last election was low voter turnout, low voter registration. It was about 66% of registered voters here in Portsmouth who actually voted. And an interesting idea that was presented in Seattle was to have all landlords, when they're enrolling new tenants, to give them voter registration information, voter registrar information, and a voter registration application. And so I was hoping that we might adopt that policy, particularly for lower income and younger people, to get more people registered, more people voting, particularly since 40% about of people living in Portsmouth rent, including me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lisa Lucas-Burk, you have the floor.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Thambeswamy. One of the things that I'm involved in, in my community services, with the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, and voter registration is something that we always do annually, in the spring and in the fall. We usually target some of our higher education centers, universities, and specifically here in Portsmouth, Tidewater Community College, and we usually register those new voters that are turning 18 for that year. But that's a great idea, and maybe we can take some of our sorority sisters who are commissioned to do voter registration throughout the community and take that idea, and maybe partner with some of our public housing and some of our other apartment businesses and things, and take that into consideration. So thank you for coming forth with that idea.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler. And sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, sign and arm, Mr. White and staff, city manager and city attorney, Clyde Toler, Power View. I come before you tonight, where you pass my article around. You know, back in the day, when I was telling you about how they, I was up in Maryland and North Carolina and everywhere for the Fleet Reserve Association, which is the Marine Corps, the Navy, and the Coast Guard, which were representing branch 37 here in Portsmouth. When I was telling you about it, they was joning me about how bad we were and everything, all right? I brought something to the city. So I am the shipmate of the year for 2016 for North Carolina, West Virginia, District Columbus, Maryland, and Delaware. I am also the chaplain, but don't laugh, but I'm the chaplain too. I'm branch 37 here in Portsmouth. I want to thank all the military that came out and retired peoples and wounded and all. This parade was a great success. It was more and more every year, we're getting to be more. But look, put a few more potted things out there. All right, you people don't know what that is, outhouse, so they keep doing them, they don't understand. But you need some more of them out there, because everybody was running around looking for them, couldn't find. Get Miss White's little old scooter she used to do, and let them get on there and ride around, they can get to us quicker. But anyway, this city is beautiful, it's coming along good. And I feel good when I go to these meetings all over the state and everywhere in there, I hear good things about Portsmouth. And I think this sale thing, I like that. I'm glad we ain't a seagull, or whale, or something like that, but I think that, that's a nice thing to call. So I hope the peoples of Portsmouth come together and vote for this. We need this. This would be nice sitting over there. It ain't costing us nothing. So why not do it? Anyway, as you know, the minister was here tonight, he didn't say anything. You know, his church was the church that burned down here in the city of Portsmouth struck by lightning. So they're going to build back, and it'll be nice for the city, for them to build back, take their spot up where it won't be a vacant lot no more. But right now, the police department, I take my hat off to them, and my community, all they empower you, we're grateful. You are really doing your job. I see you in the street now, and sometime I see you park the car and get out and walk. That's a nice thing. We are really coming together. And I noticed the council, all 7-7-7-7, when you vote now, hey, that's good. We ain't arguing, we ain't fussing. Hey, this is a nice thing. You should pat yourself on the back. Let's keep it this way. But anyway, we got a long ways to go, and I'm hoping that we'll have Sheriff Washington back, because we got a lot of bushes that ain't got to be cut, overgrown, this city going to, a little bad, but we coming along. But we need to get to this. And don't forget Craddock. They don't beat their gums too much about it, but I go to all the little functions, I be there 4th of July. So I see you there, Mr. Moody, a lot of us. But we need to come out and support Craddock with that for the 4th of July. They need us, and we should do that for the city also. But I hope to be there. And you know, I have, ever since I retired in '79, I have made every parade, Memorial Day in this city of Portsmouth, all except one, I was invited to West from Seattle to North Carolina, that's why I missed it ever. But I have been in every parade. I have walked, can't walk that far now, but now I ride Sheriff Washington's seat today. But anyway, keep on doing what we doing, and we're looking good. And now I can go to the meeting in all states, and when I go to the national meeting, you know, I'm going to rub it in, because Portsmouth is on top. They won't laugh at us no more. And thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My topic tonight concerns the leadership and management of Portsmouth. In June 2003, there was an advisory service panel from the Urban Land Institute to bring in their team members to help the leaders and citizens to find creative, practical solutions for issues such as downtown redevelopment, land management strategies, evaluation of development potential, growth and management for community revitalization, reuse of contaminated property for redevelopment, military base reuse, provisions of low cost and affordable housing, and asset management strategies. The Urban Land Institute panel included teams that were interdisciplinary to address a given project. These teams provided a holistic look at development problems in Portsmouth. The panel's team chose to begin with a broad strategy. That broad strategy was from the realization that the city lacked a vision and overall focus for a master plan strategy. The civic leadership was dedicated to make downtown Portsmouth more economically competitive. Even though the civic leadership had this dedication, they lacked a vision for its downtown. The city's focus has been on projects, not an overall development strategy. The panel stated that the city must designate a single entity that will be responsible for implementing the downtown vision. Since there is no vision, multiple organizations, multiple commissions, Portsmouth Partnership, developers, and banks are responsible for managing multiple tasks, but no one entity is responsible for overseeing efforts or investments. Does anyone remember how Moses led the Israelites out of the land of Egypt? He had a lot of work to do to build community. What did he do? He assembled the people. They made a home for divine presence, presence to lead them. With that divine presence, Moses created a community by collective undertaking, one that involved all to make a distinctive contribution. When the General Assembly made Portsmouth in 1752, did the leadership create an identity for Portsmouth? What about the expansion of Portsmouth with annexes that arose? Portsmouth expanded its land in 1763. What was the city's identity with that annex? There had to be an identity, because four years later, on November the 1st, 1767, the Norfolk Naval Shipyard was founded. Currently, we are celebrating 250 years of the founding of the shipyard. What kind of identity has the shipyard brought us through the years? What identity do the other annexes bring to Portsmouth, like the one in 1784, the one in 1894, the one in 1909, and in 1919? What about 1948, and 1960, and 1968? How have these annexes been memorialized through the years? Isn't this a part of our problem in the city? The city has lacked vision and lacked an overall focus and a master plan strategy from Portsmouth's beginning. All of the annexes have made Portsmouth a mere aggregate, a whole without parts. Portsmouth was founded by numbers rather than any sense of identity of its parts. Portsmouth is a city whose citizens may have nothing in common, except that at a certain point, they find themselves together. We are a public body. We are a crowd of people who have nothing in common, except that we live in Portsmouth. Portsmouth has no constructive purpose. There is no gathering together distinct and separate contributions of many individuals, so that each one can say, I helped to make this. Moses assembled the people on occasion, and emphasized that each and every one had something different to give. We need a leader like Moses to turn distinctive attributes into singleness of purpose. We need a vision that includes all the identities of the annexes areas of our city. We need the people's government, not nonprofits dictating what the city needs, or commissions to take away the people's right to self-govern. We need to put up lines of communication, so people can self-govern. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And the next speaker is Robert Mills, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Dr. Patton, members of City Council. I'm Robert Mills. I live at U-13 Bell Haven Road, West Craddock. First of all, I would like to see all of you there, July the 4th, at Craddock, because usually we have a good turnout from you all. So, but what I'm getting at is, back in February this year, I came, talked about the piece of property that follows Derby Road in West Craddock. That's part of the old Craddock High School property. That's still overgrown, it's got the bamboo that's now 25 feet high, and you can't even look through it from all the houses that face Derby. They back up to a bamboo forest, and before it's, it's over with, we're going to have another fire there. That's why I called about in February, that's why I'm down here again, because whoever cuts for the city, cuts the first part of the lot, and they cut the back end of the lot that faces, that follows into Deep Creek, across from the golf course. Because I've seen city crews out there, but they won't cut that middle part. And the neighbors are tired of looking at bamboo forests, and what are they going to do with this? And I want some answers. That's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Patton, would you have somebody from your staff get the details, so we can, you can address this matter?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, the speaker indicated that he came in February, and he is correct. We have a Mr. Wright and a team who has been working on this project. The bamboo and how it has grown has become an invasive growth. And at first, we thought that we could solicit the sheriff, in which he volunteered, that he could go out and cut the bamboo down. However, it's not just a cut-down. It has to be removed. And we should be able to come back to you on the 10th, or before I'll get your report and get back with the citizen, to let you know the cost of what it would be to. And it's, it's a lot of bamboo. First, we were looking to try to see if there was someone interested in buying it, and then it would cost us less to get it out of the ground. But I'll get a report back. It has not been something that we have neglected, we just haven't gotten a fix for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah. Dr. Pat, Dr. Patton, when you, you said first you were looking to see if someone were interested in buying, buying what?
The bamboo. We were informed that the bamboo is a product that is sellable, sellable. Someone would be interested in buying it. However, we have not actually put out anything definitive to see, but it is not something that we can just go out there, and there are some laws prohibiting us doing what most people think you just go out there and cut it down. It will be more aggressive and dangerous. It has to be removed.
All right. Thank you. We'll look forward to that report. Councilwoman Simms.
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. You may have noticed that some of us were up here kind of whispering a few minutes ago, which is very rude, but I think it's important to know that we were excited, because we all got notices on our phones on breaking news that our former colleague Doug Smith, who was a City Councilman and Economic Development Director here in the city, has just been named the city, the permanent city manager in the city of Norfolk. So we were all... He was deputy city manager. So we're all very excited about Doug, and that's why we were whispering, and I apologize.
Thank you for that explanation, and good news.
Yes.
Norfolk needs a little bit of Portsmouth, don't you think? Our last speaker is Mark Gadelgi-Yatroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. Thanks to Councilmember Whitaker, we received a short report tonight on the status of SIPSA and Portsmouth's solid waste disposal program as of January 2018. When I saw the update, I was scratching my head over why it took so long for that information to come into the public realm, considering that the last proposal, the last proposal for a transfer station was dealt with back in January, and we have received assurances that information would be forthcoming about what's next since then. So it's nice to have this snippet of information, but we eagerly await additional details on this particular aspect of civic life. In February, council had a retreat, and two high-level commitments came out of that. One was to partner with the schools in improving the educational system here, and the other was to establish a task force on poverty in the city. That was February. The council adopted the vision principles and, and those specific tasks at a subsequent meeting, and here we are in June. So I've, having heard no updates on those specific commitments, I am asking you to report quarterly on your progress on each of those objectives. I would say the budget, which my colleague Kathy Revel calls the expression of civic values, the budget really speaks in some degree to your commitment to education. The school system had to... The school system had to make a Sophie's Choice when it adopted its budget, so that it could fund increases for school staff, council not having been forthcoming with any additional support of a financial, of a financial type. So, I'm looking forward to hearing some positive developments in terms of your commitment to partnering with the schools. Additionally, I'm old enough to remember when President Johnson declared war on poverty in the United States. That was over 50 years ago. And so, the United States was in a very enviable position in the world financially at that point in time, although we were getting embroiled to a larger and larger degree in a foreign police action that tied up a lot of resources. With all the financial capabilities of the U.S. in the late 60s, we have not come to a satisfactory conclusion of the American War on Poverty, making that even a longer-running war than the war in Afghanistan. So, I'm very interested in what the city of Portsmouth will be able to do in terms of eliminating poverty here. But I don't want to discourage you from undertaking the task, I do want periodic reports. Lastly, although I share your, I share your pleasure that our farmer, former neighbor is city manager in Norfolk, be careful what you say when you, when you say Norfolk needs a little piece of Portsmouth, they might annex us. Have a good evening.
Thank, thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you've got the floor.
Yes, Mr. Yatrowski, let me just comment on your, the two issues you brought up in regards to the poverty issue and the schools issue. Those two issues are connected, in that anyone knows that has studied poverty, that education is a major part of that. And if there is a sincere effort on the part of this council to address what it rolled out at the beginning of the year, this, this task force on poverty, which I have not asked any questions on lately, because I'm interested in hearing, too, where we're going with this. By cutting education, that definitely did not show a true commitment to poverty. Either we're going to make people comfortable in poverty, or we're going to try to eliminate poverty. Either way, it's going to take significant funding and commitment to that. I say that because we just heard a presentation tonight, and when we talk about federal subsidies and assisting people, I believe, I don't know if you were in the presentation, where we are subsidizing the port and, and the dredging, that would be to the tune of $316 million, all of it coming from taxpayer dollars, but yet we get no true return on that. But yet, we will not fund our education system, which is a delivering tool and a major portion of helping people to get out of, of poverty. I think everyone who has been exposed to an education can say that it has helped to uplift them to higher levels. And so, what you are raising are actually the same issue, and that is, if this council is not going to be committed to education, but yet we continue to provide corporate welfare, but we're not going to provide the same levels of funding for our children, and it goes unquestioned. No one questions the millions of dollars that the port receives, and those are our tax dollars, and we freely do it, but yet we will not commit like that to our school system. And so, I'm eager to hear, too, was this just a grandstanding moment, or are we seriously going to address issues of living wage and education in the city? That takes moral leadership, and that's what we have to be committed to. But I thank you for raising that.
Yes, sir, I, I concur.
Thank you, sir. You have your seat. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.